The Committee of the Whole Meeting for July 1st, 2025 is hereby called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Nunez.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Savel.
Here.
Alderman Benuelos.
He's not here.
All right. Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Can you hear us, Alderwoman Bade?
While she does that, Alderman Larson.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Mayor Nash is present. And Alderwoman Bade, can you hear us? Can someone from my-- oh, she can hear us.
She nodded yes and gave a thumbs up.
Lovely. She's present.
The next agenda item, Alderwoman Bade requests permission to participate remotely per Section 2-80 based on a reasonable anticipation of an extended illness.
Second.
Is there a motion to allow Alderwoman Bade to participate remotely? Motion made by Alderwoman Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman White. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries by voice vote. Please let us know if you want verbally by if you want to interject into the discussion this evening, Alderwoman Bade. Next agenda item, will the clerk please read for approval into the consent agenda?
We are the minutes, 25:05:27. Approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, June 17th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for Tuesday, June 17th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting as presented? The motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the mayor's report. John?
Thank you so much, Mayor. We have two items we'd like to present to the community here tonight. First, we would like to invite up Jason Aries, in addition to Chief Matt Thomas of the Aurora Police Department and the command staff here tonight. Jason Aries is the chief of police over in Naperville. He's also an executive at the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police. We're going to have a special award presentation here tonight for one of our own officers, Gerardo Chides, who saved two people's lives last year in 2024. I'm going to invite Jason Aries to come up now and talk more about all the great work that one of our officers did and the life-saving efforts that he did for our city.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Good evening, everyone in the audience. Again, my name is Jason Aries. I'm the chief right next door with Naperville PD, so it's a great honor. We do a lot of work with the Aurora Police Department, so again, I'm super excited to be here to present this award to Gerardo tonight. I am also, should mention, a member of the Illinois Chiefs on the executive board, so I am here representing Illinois Chiefs this evening. So I'm here to present a life-saving award for some outstanding work and bravery performed by our Officer Gerardo Chides on two different occasions in 2024. The first one was on January 19th, when Officer Chides was dispatched to a call of a dog viciously attacking a girl. When he arrived, he very quickly assessed the scene, decided on an action, and carried out his decision. In this instance, he knew he had to immediately stop the attack of the dog on this young woman. To do this, he had to shoot the dog three times. He then immediately began to render aid and direct other officers to get resources to help with this very gruesome situation. A tourniquet was placed on a near completely severed arm. He did this while keeping calm and showing great compassion for the victim and getting her help. That was incident one. Incident two, and I'm often asked in my town sometimes what separates the police and our call to action, and I think this one is a very good example of that. So on August 5th, 2024, while on vacation in Texas, he was traveling on Highway 20 outside of Colorado City. He witnessed a motorcycle crash in which the rider of the motorcycle struck a guardrail. As a result, the rider's leg was completely severed from his body. Officer Chides quickly pulled over, drugged the victim out of the lane of traffic, which was a busy highway, removed his shirt to apply direct pressure, and then improvised a tourniquet when he was given a belt. Just fantastic work, man, under great pressure. Again, he was the calm in the chaos. He showed a great deal of compassion again and helped this victim through a very difficult situation. So for his action in both these incidents, on behalf of the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police, the Aurora Police Department, and you know what? From us at Naperville, we're proud to have you on our side. We'll be presenting you with a life-saving award this evening if you want to come up.
We also have Mayor John Lash here. He's going to be presenting a Mayor's Award of Excellence to Officer Chides for all the great work that he's done.
You have a very impressive record. Glad to have you on the force. So Officer Gerardo Chides, for receiving the Life Saving Award Certificate of Recognition for the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police and for your heroic efforts in saving the lives of two individuals in need, demonstrating remarkable tactical expertise, compassion, and care, your life-saving actions serve as a testament to your incredible service to the city of Aurora. So thank you very much, Officer Chides. Do you want to vote? One more photo? Here we go again. Are you guys ready? One, two, and three. Thank you. And then if you want to say something to the microphone, happy to take the hardware, put it over here for you for a second.
Well, I'm a person of short words. I just want to give thanks to God, thanks to my family who is here, and also my APD family. Thank you, and the city of Aurora for everything. Those situations, just the training, everything, it's hard to explain. It's just on those times I just acted. Thank you.
We're very proud to have Officer Chides as part of our APD family. You know, I think like Chief Aries said, his actions are exactly what the best in public service do every day. Some things you don't see, but these actions that are highlighted today by Officer Aries not only reflect, you know, Officer Chides's selflessness, his sense of service and character, but they also reflect the values of our police department. And we're incredibly proud of Officer Chides and just want to congratulate him again on receiving this award. So thank you.
Congratulations again to Officer Chides. Thank you to the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police for coming out. Really appreciate the distinction and recognition. Next up, before we move on to the regular agenda, we also would like to honor this year's Fourth of July Parade Grand Marshal Hugo Saltegero. Hugo is a longtime community member, servant leader here in the area. He currently serves as the Executive Director of the Valley Sheltered Workshop, leading a bold transformation in disability services. He has done so much for this community. I mean, he moved into Hesett House during the COVID-19 pandemic with his son to deliver life-saving care to all of those living there. He also works at or helps out at St. Joseph's Parish in Aurora's Pigeon Hill neighborhood, leading an adult faith formation. He walks alongside families preparing for sacraments. He also organizes the church's annual holiday food distributions. Hugo represents the best of the Aurora community, united, generous, and proud to call this city home. And Hugo, we're honored that you're going to be our grand marshal here this year. We'll also invite up Hugo's family, friends, anybody who knows Hugo would like to come up with him. We're going to present Hugo with a banner.
For the Fourth of July. Everybody, come on up. I only brought a few people with me.
Yeah. A few of your closest friends.
A few of my closest friends. All righty, guys. Ready? Ready, one, two, and three. Big smile. All right, one more. Hugo, you want to say a few words? Shorter than the last guy's. There we go. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, my fellow Auroraans. I am beyond humbled for this recognition. I don't do anything that I do, I don't do for recognition. As a first-generation American, my dad came here and served in the Army, and he made Aurora
a post out there and welcoming nominations from the community, and I think that the
our foundation. And he taught us that as a young kid, my mom and dad were unsung heroes of the neighborhood.
fact that you received the most nominations of support from the community as well as
I remember growing up, my parents always brought more groceries than what we needed
all the people here today says that the people are behind you. So thank you for all your activism and service in the community and look forward to seeing
in our house, and I didn't know why as a kid. And then my dad would call on certain days from work and tell my mom that someone's
you on the Fourth. It's going to be a good parade.
Thank you. coming by. My mom would fill those bags with food, and then some family we did not know would show up at the house and we'll give them food. And my mom would always say, "Yo se pague," which means in English, "The God will take care of you." And that's something we did. There was no newspapers, there was no fanfare, there was nothing. It was just, "Take care of your neighbors because that's what you're meant to do." She instilled that to me and to my families and to the communities that I served with.
That will conclude the mayor's report here tonight. Thank you, everybody, for being here, and congratulations to both Officer Chides and
On behalf of myself, my VSW community, St. Joseph's community, and of course, my Hesett
Hugo Saltegero. One more round of applause for both of them, please.
Just to add on, one more brief report.
family, I want to thank you very much and allow us to serve in this great city. Thank you.
I think everybody knows the fireworks are on July 3rd, and July 4th, the parade steps off, I believe, at 10:00 a.m. So we all look forward to walking behind Hugo. As well, I just want to commend both the Aurora Police, our Communications Department, and all the alderpeople that have participated in distributing the "If you light it, we'll cite it" campaign literature and yard signs throughout the community. The Aurora Police report a 20% reduction in calls for fireworks already this year. So that's good. We are gathering data in one center spot. In the past, this has been gathered through two or three different avenues. So that's good news, and just want to say thanks to everybody that's participated and helpful. At this time, before we continue with the regular business, if anybody's here just for the presentations and would like to get up and leave, we'll give you a few minutes just to exit. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we please just read the rules of public comment.
Pursuant to the Urban Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the Committee of the Whole for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the Committee of the Whole shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the first person wishing to offer public comment?
Kathy Dada.
If you want to approach either one is fine. Usually, most people give it from over there. Or no, you can stand behind the podium and address the council. And there'll be little lights that alert you when you have 30 seconds left on the yellow and a red light when your three minutes has expired. But your three minutes begins now. Welcome and thank you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kiyati Doda, and I'm a rising freshman at Matia Valley High School and a member of the Youth Steering Committee. I'm here today to talk about a real opportunity for our community, promoting nutritious, inclusive, and sustainable plant-based food options in our schools. This issue became personal to me during a summer program I attended at IMSA, the Illinois Mathematics and Science Academy. One of my friends there practiced jennism. For the entire week, her only real option at lunch was salad, day after day. I watched her go through this day tired and hungry through simply because the cafeteria didn't provide complete balanced plant-based meals. She's not alone. Students across the country face this issue. What we serve in schools sends a message about what we value. Today, we're missing the chance to value health, inclusion, and sustainability. Plant-based meals have been shown to lower the risk of heart disease, type 2 diabetes, and childhood obesity. A study in The Lancet shows that plant-based eating, especially in childhood, leads to better long-term health outcomes. Environmentally, the numbers are just as strong. 50% less water used per meal, 75 fewer greenhouse gas emissions, and less land and fewer resources overall. Cities like New York City are already acting. Under Mayor Eric Adams, NYC Public Schools launched Plant-Powered Fridays, serving over 1 million students a plant-based meal once a week. If massive districts can do this, we can take the first step right here in our local schools. Here's what I'm proposing. Launch a Plant-Based Monday or Meatless Friday pilot program in our schools, offering full, balanced meals that are both filling and flavorful, not just salads or sides. We need to fuel the students so they can last throughout the school day. We can collaborate with schools' nutrition teams to develop simple, affordable, plant-based menus with direct input from students to ensure the meals are actually enjoyable and eaten. Making dietary inclusion a priority so that people with plant-based diets, whether for health, religious, cultural, or ethical reasons, have real options they can rely on every single day. And we can also raise awareness through educational videos and engagement, using posters, student-led taste tests, and short informational videos to spark curiosity and normalize plant-based choices in the lunchroom. This isn't just about food. It's about equity, it's about health, it's about our climate, and it's about letting every student feel seen and supported at lunch, not just left out. Together, we can make our schools leaders in compassion and sustainability, just like others' forward-thinking cities and districts have done. Thank you for your time, and I'd love to work with you to bring this change to life.
Thank you, Ms. Toda. Your time is up. There's no real Q and A here. You can just return to your seat, and we're not allowed to respond, as the clerk had pointed out. Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment?
Dr. Sandy Gonzalez-Rivas.
You have three minutes beginning now. Welcome, Ms. Gonzalez.
My name is Dr. Sandy Gonzalez-Rivas Sheilla. I am with the Aurora Rapid Response Team. I also sadly live in Franco's Ward. I'm speaking on behalf of Siempre Unidos and speaking on a member Allison's speech. To our city leaders, our alders, I come to you not just as a concerned resident, but as someone who has witnessed firsthand the heartbreak and fear spreading through our community. It is easy to celebrate immigrant culture when it's convenient, when it's colorful, musical, and marketable. It's easy to walk down the street during an inauguration to the sound of mariachis. But what happens when that same mariachi is detained by a federal agent on his way home? Just yesterday, the Aurora Rapid Response Team responded to someone who was detained by ICE on Lake Street and Jericho Road. Too often, I hear our leaders praising the hard work of immigrants, the so-called backbone of this city. But if you truly value us, stop putting blue ribbons on their backs while ignoring the weight they carry, because it's not celebration if you can't guarantee their safety. It's not inclusion if you stay silent while ICE detains our neighbors. Aurora cannot claim to be a proud city of immigrants while standing idle as those very immigrants are criminalized. Cultural pride is not a substitute for political action. This is why we demand that all alders receive Know Your Rights training through the Aurora Rapid Response Team, a community-led, providing real resources for Aurora residents facing ICE encounters. Our city formally ensures that Aurora law enforcement does not collaborate with ICE and that we take concrete steps beyond what the Trust Act mandates statewide. Any officer or city official who violates these principles be held accountable with real consequences, not just PR statements. Aurora, if we are to call ourselves a city of integrity, must act like it. Let's stop applauding immigrants when they're laboring and start protecting them when they're targeted. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. The clerk, please read the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment.
Adam Polly.
You have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to see you again. I rise today to express my disappointment. Recently, the signage for the Give Responsibly Aurora was taken down. That is a good program designed to provide lasting assistance to our working family and those in need in a compassionate, responsible, and sustainable manner. I'd also like to know how much it costs to take those signs down. Also, about a week ago, the Public Transition Committees were announced to highlight the priorities of the new administration and how to move Aurora forward. Unfortunately, mental health and addiction was not listed anywhere under the purview of those committees, implying that it is not a priority. I was told it may be under public safety, but if it is, then that perpetuates the stigma that those who are struggling with mental health and addiction are a danger to our community, and they are not. The vast majority of them are not. Actions speak louder than words. I received assurances from at the time our aldermen at large that mental health and addiction would be a priority, that helping our most vulnerable working families would be priorities. But unfortunately, at this time, the actions do not appear to be matching the words that I was told. Aurora led cane counting in the overdose deaths. Every five minutes in this country, someone dies of an overdose, and every 11 minutes, someone dies of a suicide in this country. Our battle cry should be "Never Again," and that's from the CDC. We, as responsible government leaders, are responsible for the conditions that are happening under and around us. They are reflective on our souls, and when our book of life is opened at the end of our days, I hope that we have no regrets. But that would mean that we need to take action on these issues today. We, as a community, cannot rise, we cannot ascend unless we all rise together, and that includes our most vulnerable people. Thank you, and I yield the balance of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Polly. Madam Clerk, do we have any other members of the public wishing to make public comment?
We do. We have one final speaker. That is Cynthia Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Serna. You have three minutes beginning now.
Cool. Thank you. Can you hear me? Everyone hear me? Okay. So my name is Cynthia Serna. I live in the Ward 6. I am speaking in for a member of Siempre Unidos. So behind the anguish of watching my own people suffer, families separated, men and women detained while trying to provide for their loved ones, our elders are treated as criminals for simply working to survive. There's a deep and growing anger, and it is not misplaced. I am outraged. How is it that we have multiple Latino aldermen sitting on the city council, and yet virtually nothing is being done to ensure the safety, dignity, and well-being of Latino residents in this city? Javier Banuelos, your silence is deafening. Dan Barreiro, despite your experience of community leadership, you have failed to demonstrate any meaningful action on behalf of the people you claim to represent. Juan Garza, you frequently highlight your immigrant background during campaign season, but what tangible outcomes have you delivered for the people in your ward? A ward, I might add, that holds the largest Latino population in Aurora, the very same ward where I was birthed and raised and now raise children of my own. Those scholarships and community events are not enough, Juan. Families in our community are not just struggling, they are living in a state of constant fear. Fear of leaving their homes, fear of being profiled or detained on their way to work, fear that their children may not return home from school because of an unjust system that has gone unchallenged. Even the most basic acts, going to a doctor appointment and picking up groceries, have become risks. Jonathan Nunez, I address you last because we are of the same generation. I see you in the potential, I see you with the potential to lead differently, and yet you two have chosen caution over courage.
Thank you, Ms. Serna. You have three minutes beginning now.
Cool. Thank you. Can you hear me? Everyone hear me? Okay. So, my name is Cynthia Serna. I live in the Ward Six. I am speaking in for a member of Siempre Unidos. So, behind the anguish of watching my own people suffer, families separated, men and women detained while trying to provide for their loved ones, our elders are treated as criminals for simply working to survive. There's a deep and growing anger, and it is not misplaced. I am outraged. How is it that we have multiple Latino aldermen sitting on the city council, and yet virtually nothing is being done to ensure the safety, dignity, and well-being of Latino residents in this city? Javier Banuelas, your silence is deafening. Dan Barrero, despite your experience of community leadership, you have failed to demonstrate any meaningful action on behalf of the people you claim to represent. Juan Garza, you frequently highlight your immigrant background during campaign season, but what tangible outcomes have you delivered for the people in your ward? A ward, I might add, that holds the largest Latino population in Aurora, the very same ward where I was birthed and raised and now raise children of my own. Those scholarships and community events are not enough, Juan. Families in our community are not just struggling, they are living in a state of constant fear. Fear of leaving their homes, fear of being profiled or detained on their way to work, fear that their children may not return home from school because of an unjust system that has gone unchallenged. Even the most basic acts, going to a doctor appointment and picking up groceries, have become risks. Jonathan Nunes, I address you last because we are of the same generation. I see you in the potential, I see you with the potential to lead differently, and yet you too have chosen caution over courage. We cannot afford more of the same. You have a civic duty, not just a political position. It is your responsibility to disrupt the broken patterns of assimilation, complacency, and performative representation that have defined this council for far too long. Yes, bureaucracy is real, yes, institutional resistance is frustrating, but you were not elected to persevere the status quo. You were elected to fight for the people, and right now, our people are being failed. Alders are elected to represent the people of their wards, to be voiced at city council meetings. You are supposed to be accountable to us, the citizens of Aurora, for every action you take in that role, and yet here we are with critical issues still unresolved. This isn't just disappointing, it's infuriating. It means, it means the very responsibilities you swore to uphold are being neglected. We trusted you with this position. We put our faith in you to lead, to act, to care. If these problems continue to go unanswered, then let it be clear, you are failing us. You are not doing the job we elected you to do, and that is nothing short of negligence. If we do not hold our own accountable, how are we supposed to progress as a culture? I urge each of you to reelect, reevaluate, and act now, not later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Serna. Madam Clerk, do we have any other members of the public wishing to offer comment?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. That concludes the public comment portion. We will move to the committee reports. I'll ask Chairman Mike Seville to give the BZNE committee report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The first item that we held from our June 25, 2025 meeting was 25-0406, an informational discussion on the upcoming ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the Aurora Code of Ordinances titled Buildings and Building Regulations to adopt the 2024 I series of codes and recommended amendments. This is for informational only that was presented to the, our committee, the BZNE Committee, and we had a very lively discussion, I thought. Just to let the council know that in 2001, we were number nine in the state of Illinois for having the most up-to-date and codes in the state of Illinois. We are now number one in Illinois, and we've been so for, I think, a couple of years. Number one means we're number two, because you can't get a number one, it's too, it's impossible, so you're always trying to attain perfection. But I think that gives a lot of credit to John Curley and Josh Ream and Jesse and the rest of Division and Department that we have the best codes, the most up-to-date codes, the most modern codes, which also affects people doing business and living in Aurora because it lowers their insurance rates, and that's a good thing for our community as well. So, John, did you want to say anything with regard to your presentation?
Thank you. Thank you for the great conversation we had at BZNE. I just wanted to flag that this is also the same item that we've got, an item held here that came from RAP, and I'm hoping that we can still hold it here, although it sounds like legal might want maybe a month or so to hold it here. So, I just wanted to turn it over to Deb to see what the protocol is or what we need to do for leaving it here or what we need, if there's something else we need to do.
Since there may be amendments to what has already been drafted, we would ask that it goes back to Rules Administration and Procedures to start at the committee level, again with any amendments and changes.
So, entertain a motion to refer the matter to the Rules Administration and Procedures Committee for the additional review and potential amendments to the ordinance.
Second.
Well, point of order, this was, this particular item is just for informational only, so it wouldn't go back to RAP. I think you're, I think you're talking about a different item. These three items are for information only. They're not to be sent forward. There's one on RAP, when we get to RAP, that we can do that, too.
We can certainly move it back to RAP. There's no action needed on this, that's correct.
All three of these.
Okay, so we'll do that on the RAP agenda, but then it should be held in the RAP committee due to the nature of amending the ordinance.
And broadly, we also had a very lengthy discussion on this this morning as well with legal and going through some of the pending legislation coming down from Springfield as well as others that'll affect this item. So, expect to see it back at RAP Committee in about a month, is that what we're thinking?
That is our hope.
Alderman Spill.
And Mayor, did John Curley, did you want to say anything about this undertaking and what this means and any more details?
Well, what you were, what you were highlighting is we're, we have an ISO Insurance Service Organization, Verisk, rating of a two, which is the best in the state. We attained that in 2018. We were the first community to attain that in the state since they created this grading scale, and no one else has attained it yet. So, we do have the best in the state, and back many years ago, we were, we had a score of a nine when I started. When we first adopted our first codes, we achieved a five, and we've been marching to better standard since then. But in addition to what you highlighted, the other items that's important to flag is our staff's willingness to become certified and keep certifications at a level that most other communities have not attained. That's one of the other primary scoring mechanisms to improve our score is our staff certification level.
And if I may add, Mayor, that one of the things that John Curley pointed out to the committee was because we adopt best practices in terms of rehabilitation and renovation of our historic and older infrastructure, meaning buildings and the like, especially in the downtown, that a lot of the buildings that have been recently rehabilitated and is open for business is because we adopt this forward-looking concept and not limited to the, I don't know, the I's and the T's being dotted and crossed, that we look for creative means to rehabilitate these buildings. For example, the old Silver Plate Building could not have been rehabilitated in many cities in the state of Illinois except here in Aurora because we adopt these best practices. Is that correct?
It is. I'll bring, when we, when we do present this, either at RAP and perhaps here again, I'll add some slides to discuss the existing building code and our best practices that have been recognized nationally, actually.
In fact, you give tours to people across the nation, do you not?
Yes. We've had seminars about how we do this and how we promote the use of the existing building code and the flexibility that we've found to teach other communities how to do the same thing. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Curley.
I'm sorry. Oh, and we'll get that presentation again to review, right?
Yes. Yeah. I'll add some slides to highlight that when we bring that forward again, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. The next two agenda items also are no action needed, but if you'll read them into the record.
Okay, great. 25-0511 is a resolution approving the final plan for lots 1 to 62 of the Harvest Point subdivision on vacant land located east of Radent Road and north of Butterfield Road. And the second one is 25-0512, resolution approving final plan on Harvest Point subdivision located east of Radent Road and north of Butterfield Road for one-family dwelling use. Just to give you some information, these are appealable. If they're not appealed by 5 o'clock tomorrow, they become law. If they are appealable, that's when they go to city council. But this is the, the two, or the subdivision next to Marmion. The average lot size is around 7,000, 7,800. The price pointed between $490,000 and $600,000 on 21 acres and 51 homes. And that's the report from BZNE, Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman Spill. Next, I'll have Chairman Ted Messiakos give the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mayor. Surprisingly, the Finance Committee scheduled for June 26, 2025 was canceled, so there is no report to provide today.
Thank you, Chairman Messiakos. Next, I'll ask Chairman Carl Franco to give the PHST Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Health, Safety, and Transportation Committee meeting scheduled for June 24, 2025 was also canceled. No report.
Thank you, Chairman. There is going to be one agenda item from PHS and T revolving, involving a liquor license, simply changed their name in the application. We've already approved them, they've gone through, but we'll be bringing that to the city council as a whole next meeting, so. Next, I'll ask Chairwoman Juan Garza to give the IT Committee report.
Yes, Mayor. We met on June 23. The first item is 25-0433, a resolution authorizing acceptance of the law bid for Bennett and Rowse to roffing ink for the roof replacement in the fifth-floor city hall in 77 South Broadway DSC, and the amount totaling $687,300 and the 5% contingency of $24,365.
Consent. No objection to this item, we'll go on consent.
The next item is 25-0497, a resolution authorizing the renovation of existing space in APD Investigations Unit to support a digital forensic program worth space at cost of $312,503.2.
Consent.
No objections, this item will go on consent.
And we conclude the meeting, Mayor.
Thank you, Chairwoman Garza. Next, I'll ask Vice Chair Alderman Dan Barrero to give the RAP Committee report.
Thanks, Mayor Lesh. The Rules Administration Procedures Committee met on June 17 and reviewed the following items. Item 25-0468 was forwarded with a three-to-one recommendation, and this is for an ordinance amending Section 2-277C of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to the qualifications of department heads of the city. This is, in other words, this is dealing with residency, residency requirements of department heads. We had some in-depth discussion, and so I imagine there'd probably be some questions here, so could we have a short presentation from staff?
Lesh, Chief of Staff. Assistant Chief of Staff, Nick Thompson. And this was something that Rick Beanstraw worked on from the Legal Department. He's on vacation this week, so.
Deb's sitting in.
Hello, City Council. Nicholas Richard Thompson, Deputy Chief of Staff. So, yeah, I'll briefly speak about the rationale and the 25-0468. So, really what this is about is this aligns with the state's municipal code, and after our research, and we're part of the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference, we talked with other municipalities, did a bit of research, and found that this just makes us more competitive and gives us the flexibility to make determinations based on a candidate's qualifications, character, and commitment, and not to be held back by a residency requirement. But free, you know, free to take, feel free to ask any questions, but that's really what it is.
I have a question.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
So, when we had this discussion last week and Attorney Beanstraw read the state statute to us, the state statute, and please, if I misspeaking, tell me, only took, the attorney, the head of the legal department, and the head of the engineering department out of that mandatory residency. So, that's kind of what we discussed last week. Are you suggesting today we take all of our departments out of residency?
That's not how the ordinance reads.
No, that's not what I was going to speak to. I apologize.
That's what you just said. So, you got to be real clear what you're saying here, because this is a really important decision for us to make. So, what is it that you're, what is it you're saying? Do we want to reread the statute, perhaps?
I can re, if you'd like, I'll reread the agenda item, the underlying portion, line 24, if you have that. It says, "Or were otherwise employed by the city in a capacity other than as department head prior to September 12, 2017. The residency requirement set forth herein does not apply, however, to department heads whose duties require professional licensure, or, in the opinion of the city council at the time of the appointment, require specialized training or knowledge." So, the way that the Illinois law reads, it also references licensure, and it gives two examples of the legal department and professional engineering licenses as well. So, it just gives examples, but it reads the same.
Does it have, do we have?
And I'll refer to legal for any other questions.
Any other department heads that are, fall under licensed, licensed department heads or licensed for their positions?
There could be others. I can't speak of specifics, but there's lots, something like a CPA, maybe, something like that, but also certainly in the state, as it reads in the state statute, is that they use those three examples, but it's saying professional licensure, and that is the same language that our legal team uses here.
So, I'm just going to finish up mine, and then I'll, go ahead, Deb. Ms. L.
I was going to say that was our interpretation as well.
So, my interpretation of this is I have no problem with the attorney, licensed attorney, and the engineering department, but I do have a problem with giving up residency to the entire department head in the city of Aurora. So, if that's what we're talking about here, I can't support it, but all the conversations that we have had have been only around those, from my perspective, only around those two positions. I believe that they are very precise positions, and the qualifications are, you know, maybe at a different level, but I don't want to go backwards and now take residency away from our department heads when people live in the city that they work in and they represent, they take care of that city far better than they do where their family's living in a different city. So, my opinion is we're going backwards if we take this away. I can't see taking entire residency away. I do support the portion of it. Rick didn't say last week that it was, he just said like attorney and engineering. Now, I didn't go back and read the statute, and perhaps I should have, so.
Any other questions? Alderman Spill.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, my understanding this is, has to do with just two positions at this time?
She just said maybe not.
But maybe not, right?
Well, the way it reads legally, I don't know, Deb, if you want to comment on that.
Yeah, but we have a separate ordinance that legally, right now, they have to be. So, if we want to make changes, we can make, we can.
Correct. Yes, correct. That, as it reads right now, it is all department heads. Yes.
And if. With the professional licensure. So, that would be engineering.
That's as the proposed legislation is, which is different than what you're asking, right, is what is currently stands, what is in our Code of Ordinances now.
Oh, I know it's in our Code of Ordinances now.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So, just to get to the basics, how, currently, how many department heads do we have in the city of Aurora?
Well, that's shifting a bit due to our reorganization, but there's, what?
We can get back to you.
Yeah, I can give you an exact number.
Well, give me a ballpark, so I know what we're talking about. I won't hold you to it.
Are we talking 10, maybe? Something like that?
Department heads or division heads?
Department heads.
Department heads. Okay. And, well, okay, because it would help if we had a quantifiable and specific ID exactly what we're talking about here. And just to give you a little history, residency really requirements started in the 1970s under the Jack Hill first administration. And the city of Aurora never had residents acquired prior to that, and they adopted residency for all future city employees. So, those that were not residents at the time were grandfathered in, but everybody hired since was required to fall under that. And in the early 90s is when we started changing the residency requirements and not applying that to the workers and the supervisors and those types of things, just the department heads. And then it was amended again, as mentioned in your staff report in 2017. So, it's been, it slowly went from having nothing to having everything to slowly being, whittling it down and moderated over the years depending on the times. So, I think it's important to know perspective as to how we got here before we can consider, you know, where we're going as well, so.
Additionally, HR, we did task HR, was doing a little bit of research to find out which other communities around us might have similar residency requirements. They did this under the previous administration, and at that time, there were none of our neighbors, but I asked them outside of, outside of Chicago that had residency requirements, but we'll, we'll hope to get an official report by city council.
I have that.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. And we did that research as well. So, for example, Naperville has no residency or proximity requirements. Village of, this is mostly in the DuPage County area, Village of, some of them have requirements only for the police chief and fire chief. Many of them have radius, like Village of Schaumburg has a radius in theirs, which is 30 minutes. We have Village of Woodridge, it's 30 miles. City of Wheaton, City of Windfield, Westmont, West Chicago, Addison, Carroll Stream, Darien, almost no residency requirements whatsoever. The only one that has a stricter one is Bolingbrook.
And what is ours?
Is that department heads, including the police chief and fire chief, must live in town.
Which is what ours is right now.
Yes.
Any other members wishing to make comment? Alderman Franco.
So, yeah, I, I think we're going to need some clarity, because we're talking 12 department heads. I think each department is in and of itself important. Public safety, I would not, they have to be in town, to me. Public safety, I would not, they have to be in town to me, they have to be in town. The professional licensing things I get, now that's four, so there may be eight more. I really want to know what they are, because I think that's important. And when you look at these comparative towns, if it's a very expensive town to live in, I can get why you wouldn't have it. If it's a small, very small town, I guess why you wouldn't get it. But we have a variety of homes, prices of homes, certainly a lot of housing, different kinds of housing, a big municipality, so I don't think it's a burden for anybody to live in the city, but I, but I think that we can use discretion on which way we go. So if we were to stay with professionals, public safety, and somewhere along the lines some superstar comes out and we have a residency requirement, I don't think it's a problem for this body to look at that and say, all right, this one superstar, we're gonna make an exception. I don't like that, but I get that you need to have talent and competency in many of these offices, so maybe that would be something going forward. But I'd really like to see what these departments, who's, who's there now, what they do, and maybe make a better decision on that. So I think that we should pay, take a look at it going forward a little bit.
I will say that as far as our current departments, as they stand, you know, they're only, our engineering department doesn't currently have a chief because Ken left, and that, the person that is under that has not moved into that position due to our residency, but as we currently stand, that is the only issue that is outstanding in the city.
And both the police and fire chief do live in the city.
Yep.
The EMA, Natalie Wise, has indicated she would like to move to the city, but the housing costs are too high right now, it's not a really good time to move, but both her and her husband have intentions to move into Aurora.
The housing in Aurora is more expensive than our neighboring communities, that kind of shocks me.
They live in Manuka.
Oh, that doesn't shock me.
A little bit of a, little bit of a drive.
That's different, okay, thank you.
May I make a suggestion?
Mr. Mayor.
Any, anybody who hasn't commented, go ahead, Alderwoman Bate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we are, at this point, we are just looking at the licensure positions. Other than that, we are not removing the residency requirement for all the department heads.
That is correct.
Okay. And can we have all the names of the licensure positions as department heads?
We can get that.
Yeah, we have two, three examples, but like we should have list of all of them.
Thank you, Alderwoman Bate.
Thank you.
Any, any other members of the council?
Unfinished.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment here. I did get an email from a resident, made a, made it a recommendation or suggestion about maybe making a require, adding requirement that any, any department head that did not have residency but upon selling their home would be required to move into Aurora. Reflecting back, you know, if, knowing that we have this long-term plan, or this is a long-term plan for people that are moving up within the city, they can say, hey, you know, I don't live in the city now, but I'd like to be the chief, or I'd like to be a department head, you know, at some, at some later date they can move. I recall a department head who's, who's not here, but that person was living in Aurora, and before, before they were a department head, and then they moved out of the city and lived in a different city, and they became a department head being a non-resident. So when you're clear about what your policy is and what it is that you want, people can make these decisions and plan ahead, and then I think it sends a good message that this is what we want. It's not not impossible, because I know we've had the, the one year, and sometimes it's been extended, but I think it's a good message to send, because we do, we do want people to take pride in where they work, and I think the residents would feel better about having more, more employees living in the city and not, and not continuing to move out. So I would, I would like to see some kind of tweaking of this, of this.
In short, what Alderman Barrero is saying is if a department head lives outside of the city, maybe one of our professional licensures, and then chooses to sell their home, then we would require them to move into the city. So if they lived in Yorkville currently and decided to sell the Yorkville home, maybe their kids grew up, and then moved into, you know, was, was making a move, that their next move would have to be Aurora if they wanted to be a department head. Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify, because I think people have shared on both sides. So this ordinance actually excludes the licensure professionals from the residency requirement, not the other way around. I think someone else said the other way around, that the licensure people had to live in the city, it's the opposite.
That's correct.
Okay.
And the challenge that we've had, especially with the engineering, I mean, when people have that licensure and they get to that senior executive level, they can pretty much go anywhere, especially when there's a shortage of, of engineers, it's happening across the country and certainly in our, our region here. So we are gonna be more concerted effort just to staff up on, on engineers, let alone get that, would, senior level would be pretty much a challenge without making this adjustment. Anybody else that hasn't?
I, I, I got a quick question, too, but you go first. Age before.
I'll, I'll let Alderwoman Smith.
So I think where we are is we would like a list of what the licensed positions would be. I absolutely have no problem with, you know, even if we continue with our ordinance and make the exception for engineering and the attorney, I'm, I'm good with that, but when we start getting past that, I get a little, little weird about it. I'd like to know more about what it is, and if they were to come to the city, they would have to work under the umbrella in which they're actually licensed for. They couldn't be licensed and working in a different department as well. That would be a workaround, which wouldn't really be, you know, a fair way to go about this. So if you could get that for us for next week, that would be helpful.
And I can also provide this list of communities, too, so you can compare to that.
Alderman Seville.
Yes, I just had a question, who the no vote was, if somebody, if you could share that, I'm just curious. There was a three to one vote.
That was me.
Okay.
Just out of, for conversation, I want to know how many roughly think that the idea Alderman Barrero is presenting is something that we want to incorporate before we draft an amendment? So in, in short, what he's saying is if somebody who has a licensure and doesn't live in the city decides to move, maybe their kids graduate, whatever, that then they would be required to move into the city if they're making a move.
I have a question on that, on the enforceability of that, do we really know when they're gonna move?
Well, that, that was my question, too, is how many people am I gonna chase around? I mean, the, in the previous administration, a lot of what they did was just ignore the residency issue for a lot of people, so we're trying to adjust it to make it more reasonable.
And it is reasonable, but then there's that other X factor, the enforcement and finding it out, so I mean, I don't, I don't know that we want to start adding work or potential work to our workload if we don't need to, but it's, it's a reasonable request, but who knows when they're gonna do it.
Right, let's say they move from Yorkville to Geneva, and we find out about it after they've already closed on a home in Geneva, how do you enforce it?
That would be the flying ointment on that.
It is. I think it's valid. Any other changes we'd like to see? I heard.
Can we, can we say, can you, because you just said, the previous administration, we ignored residency. I know we extended residency, so I'd like to know who we ignored. I think sometimes when you say blanket statements like that, you need to follow them up with some facts, and maybe you guys, long-term guys, know. I don't, I don't know.
Short-term guys know. Yeah, there were a number of chiefs who did not live in the city, and we did not extend, we didn't really consider their residency, say in a closed session or other. One of those people being our fair gentleman who moved to Florida. I said our excellent past employee who moved to Florida.
Alderman Nunez.
I know you guys pulled examples from DuPage County, was?
Correct, yeah.
Could you also pull examples from Kane as well?
For sure, we have a couple from Kane, but I can pull like a complete list for you. Just also, for the, for the good of the council, I, I do want to mention that this ordinance in particular, if, if passed, doesn't mean we're gonna go out and hire a bunch of people. What it does is give us a flexibility to make the best determinations off qualifications, and not necessarily have our hands tied. If we do have the rock star you spoke to, it just makes it easier. Currently, and I have, it's worth noting that no residency was required for most department's heads prior to twenty-seventeen, and during that time, most people were residents of Aurora were department heads. So it's not gonna necessarily change that. And the final determination, though, if someone is at director level, has to come before you as well, just to mention. So I think what this is, is not going to inform how we go about making determinations for bringing in people, but it allows us to have that opportunity if someone is, I mean, all the qualifications, has the commitment, has the character, and we don't lose out on that person. That's really what this is about, to be clear.
We can put it on unfinished, Alderman Messiakos.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. My question for you, Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
How do we know what best determination is? Can you define that for me? Can I say that, because I don't, I don't want to try to put you on the spot for, for past, for anybody in the past, and what we voted on or not voted on. What would you consider best determination?
In reference to candidate?
Build some confidence, yes. I mean, how do we know? We've hired people that work, we've had, just, we've had people that worked here, whether directors or department heads, and a bit of a head scratcher sometimes, right?
Sure.
I'm not saying everybody, sometimes it happens, and so what, what then?
So the question is what?
Best determination, can you define best determination so we know? Because we only get to see one person typically, right? Somebody vets them, it goes through human resources, then somebody else interviews them. I don't, I typically don't know who is in the interview room per se when, when someone is brought in or a group is brought in.
So yeah.
How does the community know that we have the best, the best determination for, for the City Council?
Well, you know, I, I trust our HR department. They have processes and procedures to make those determinations. If you want to get that exact wording and language and the method they use, I can definitely get that for you, but it's our HR department having those standard procedures on someone's qualifications, education, experience, and then they have other, you know, questions during those interviews that relate to a variety of different things pertaining to the community. I can give you a personal anecdotal example. I sat in on some of the PIO candidates with the police department, and they had a series of questions put out, and that was crafted by human resources, as well as the chief of fire and chief of police as well. So, you know, having the personnel that's already there doing great work, also making determinations on who was coming in to, to lead the city, in these different departments and roles.
So here's my next question. I mean, you opened up the door for, for this thought process that I'm having right here. I didn't come in here with this thought, but is there, was there ever a discussion when this was being worked on, on the administrative side, to say, we're going to evaluate two or three, and maybe even share the evaluations with the aldermen, so they can see how we derived to this best determination?
For the ordinance?
A candidate.
You're talking about candidates?
A candidate.
So you're asking for what candidate in particular?
I'll say no.
Say no?
No, that wasn't part of the process, is to bring the top three candidates to the alderman for consideration. I will say that we do, I, I have, through all the interviews, I have, I've asked if they live in the city and would like to live in the city. We want everybody to do it. There's just some people that have circumstances outside of that, but I believe your question was, has there been consideration to bring top two or three candidates to the alderman for consideration?
Right.
And the answer's been no.
Whether if they're in, in, in town or out of town, and just have an idea, I mean, that's, 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 there's where I'm coming from with my question, when we're looking at this ordinance, I guess, at this point, because you did say best determination. So like I said, sometimes we're supposed to provide on the consent and, what is it, Alderman Seville, consent and advice of the City Council? Advice and consent of the City Council, we, we vote on it. What I'm trying to get at at this point is, is there a way to get more information moving forward with these candidates besides your resume? And that's all, I'm just gonna put it out there right now. I'm not, I'm not saying to hold it up, this resolution, but like I said, you brought up a thought, and I thought I'd share it real quick. But that's about it. Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it, the time.
Thank you, Alderman Messiakos. Alderwoman Garza.
Well, it's almost the same thing what I want to ask, but also, is possible to announce the openings in first to the residents in Aurora? If we don't have no response, I'm saying in fifteen days for people apply and not qualify, maybe opening to other cities, or is possible to do that or no?
I think at the moment.
To give you the priority to the residents in Aurora. So I'm saying it's an opening in any department. So they announce where they want to announce, and they want to, in my opinion, I think they have to give the opportunity first to the residents in Aurora. If they wouldn't find a qualified people, what they were looking for, then put it for everybody, like other cities.
For sure, yeah. I don't know what goes into each role. There's nothing in the code per se to say put preference for the city of Aurora, but based off our current demographic, Aurora is favored, especially for some particular roles, it just makes more sense that you have someone in the city. Other roles, it's less relevant, but I would say that is probably part of the calculations of human resources that they're looking at resumes and things of that nature, but there's nothing in code to suggest that.
Yeah, because I, I hear comments, they say, oh, they're only hiring people when they know somebody, or they want to bring somebody they know even if it's not in the city of Aurora. So we have a lot of, a lot of comments about that. So that's what I'm saying, if it is possible to give you the priority to the residents of Aurora first, and then if you wouldn't find what we're looking for, maybe opening to everybody else.
If I may, Mayor, not, no one that we've appointed thus far except legal, a corporation council, lives outside of Aurora, so all the other appointees, mayoral appointees, have been living in the city of Aurora. So just as a clarification, also the question, just wanted to answer the question about how many departments, it's twelve as well there.
Alderwoman Garza, to answer your question, you're asking us, will we put that out just to Aurora residents first and then extend it if we don't get a good candidate for every position, are you asking about?
I'm saying for every position, yes.
I think that would probably create, for us to use that as a process, a very long process, that would, one, I know that we do open certain positions internally first before opening externally, but I think it is probably best just to open it for everybody and get the, the best candidates.
Yes.
And look at those based on qualifications, especially if residency is not required.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I also say, we do have a department head job opening right now, and that's the chief of human resources, which we did go through the channels of publishing it, you know, on the website, on LinkedIn, on Facebook, a lot of different places, and we're soliciting applications from, from everyone that way, so, and we'll go through a very typical process with that.
And there will be external and internal candidates for that. Alderman Franco.
I just want to give an example of what we've kind of been talking about here. So when we hired Rich Jacobs, and Rich, don't be embarrassed, I'm gonna say this now, and Alderwoman Smith and I were on the wrap committee, we interviewed, we had qualified candidates, but Rich was better. So, and we can use that verbiage of qualified, but again, if you have that person that's so much better than that qualification thing is, you put over here, in my mind, and you can take the best one. If they're all qualified, they're all the same, fine, but every once in a while, you just get that one rock star back there and that type of thing, so that's, that's how that works sometimes. That's at least what we went through, and I think that process worked out good, even though we had qualified candidates. So I just want to throw that out there, because that happens.
Alderman White.
So I'm uncertain how the hiring process works through human resources, that typical, typically you use a point system, so to remove subjectivity, so to Alderman Garza's point, perhaps we could include, or is there, I guess I should say, a point system where if somebody lives in the city of Aurora, similar to like if somebody's a veteran, they get additional points when their, when their resume or when their application's being reviewed. So if somebody lives in the city of Aurora, that, that's how you could provide that additional advantage. So maybe, I don't know, if you have a five-point system, and with each question that you ask, it's rated one to five, but that's one way where you can give that advantage to the person that lives in the city of Aurora and still keeping it objective.
Well, I will say historically that this body and in our municipal code, as well as many other municipal. as many other municipalities, most municipalities, the mayor is able to appoint department heads and it does not have to go through the same procedure, and that's specifically with department heads. So I, I'm just saying that this would be quite the change. You know, any of this proposed is, is, would be a shift that the department heads can be appointed. You know, bringing, hopefully you've, you've noticed that the mayor has brought you in to have discussions, to better understand those things. That is not always typical. And, you know, I think wanting everybody on the same page is really important, but at the same time, that, that is a, quite a divergence from historically what municipalities, how they function.
Mayor, so I want to just caution real quick, we're wandering away from the topic, which is residency for department heads requirement and moving into general hiring practices. So I want to make sure we try and stay focused on the agenda item.
They just have added a whole lot of conversation since I last spoke, so I will.
I'm going to keep it narrow from here on out.
Keep it narrow, and, and this might not be narrow, because you just answered the question that I was going to ask, and just so that we understand, you appoint department heads, correct?
Correct, with the consent of the council.
The HR is not doing that. The mayor is appointing.
Well, I was getting generalized questions, and I don't know if I fully understood it. I started getting questions about hiring practices, so I wanted to answer that.
We just want to make sure we're all knowing the, the right.
HR still.
Involved.
Is involved with all of us. We have to go through, you know, procedures, application, we have to go through background checks, drug testing, physical, all of that.
Any other questions on this agenda item? Or more specifically, are there any proposed amendments that people would like to bring forward on this agenda item? I know there's been an ask for information for the regional look at what other municipalities are doing. There's been a, some sort of ask about evaluation of what other certifications might be impacted. And then Alderman Brer, did you have one more thing? I had, saw your finger in the air first.
I just want to make a quick point real short. So we have some positions that we hire for that when we create eligibility lists, they're, they get extra points for being Aurora resident. Then those individuals get hired, and then after a while, they move out. But then when they want to become the chief, they have to move back in. So when we have these policies, you know, don't move out if you want to be the chief. You've got residency points, work your way up, you can be the chief. So I think we, we send mixed signals when we're, you know, moving things around, so that's just my point.
Any other members?
No, I just want to put unfinished, so we can move forward.
Okay. Is there anybody that does want to bring an amendment forward that would like to work with legal for this? There was some discussion on several amendments.
I can really talk to legal, but it's after outside of this.
Okay. So this item will go on unfinished business. Will the vice chair please read the next item?
Yes, 25-0509 was, is resolution authorizing the appointment of Tracy Vasek and Nick Richard Thompson to the tree board.
Consent.
With no objections, this item will go on consent.
And next item, 25-0516, in ordinance amending chapter two and chapter 14 of the code of ordinances pertaining to the organization of the departments and divisions of the city, and the committee forwarded this to, to this body with no recommendation. So can we, we wanted some additional information, there was not a lot, a lot of information provided in the transmittal letter. What was given us was the, the ordinance with some underlining and strike throughs, and we didn't have an org chart. So if we could have an updated presentation, that would be appreciated.
Mr. Thompson?
Hello, I've returned. So I trust that you all have the org chart and have looked at it. I'm going to go through.
You put it in at four o'clock today. We need them before that.
Um, it should have been up since last week. Okay. The what? I'm sorry. The old one, the previous org chart?
It was uploaded to legislature on Friday afternoon, the one that Nick.
Mayor, if I may, do we have it to put it on, on our screen? Is it possible that you can get on our screen here for, for the eighth ward alderperson?
For the eighth ward alderperson? Um, give me one moment.
I think we can proceed until that comes up.
It's on. So I'm going to talk about the, this high level structural changes, and then I'll go through the rationale, and then if there's any questions, feel free to stop me.
Alderwoman Bate, can you see it?
Yes, I can see it.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, so the primary structural changes have been dissolution of MOC, the mayor's office of community affairs. Within that department, there are three divisions, equity, engagement, and special events. The next big move is clerk's office moving from the law department to report to the mayor. This is also the same for emergency management. I know there was a request for Ms. Weisa to come speak today, she was unable to do so, but can speak officially?
Oh, you are here, okay.
So when we get to that part, I will have her come speak up. I know someone from RAP had requested that emergency management to speak to the change. The next change is the office of sustainability, development, and business opportunity. This is really just replacing the former mayor's office of economic development, adding that key sustainability component. And then next, we have the shift. So with those three divisions that I spoke to that are in MOC, the mayor's office of community affairs, special events is moving to communications, marketing, and now communications, marketing, and special events. And then we have equity and engagements, which will be reporting to the mayor's office, as well as the office of sustainability, development, and business opportunity, as well as the clerk's office, and as well as the emergency management. The other changes that are important to note are a change from animal care and control. The division of animal care and control is moving from public, public facilities to community services, and that is like the high level overview. Are there any questions?
Was there, first, was there a question for Ms. Weisa that was had in rap?
I would love to hear her opinion on this.
Good evening, members of the council. My name's Natalie Weisa, the emergency management coordinator for the city of Aurora. Can I have clarification behind your question, my opinion regarding the change?
Well, as I look at this, that there are questions on why some of these decisions were made, and it just seems like we're putting, you know, a square peg in a round hole, moving you from where you were, which in my opinion, which is, you know, is only, I'm not in your job, so that's why I want to know. That seemed like the right place for your department, and now I feel like it's kind of an awkward place for your department to be. So I, I don't know, what are you gaining from moving? And it appears to me you would be better off where you were, just by the nature of your job.
Okay. So I appreciate that reflection, I really do. There's a lot of history at depth in emergency management in Aurora, I value that. It's been around since the 40s and was formalized in 1958 by the city council. However, emergency management has been ping ponged for a very long time in terms of where it lives, who it, who it responds to, whether it's a division, a department, how it fits into the city government structure. At the end of the day, prior to going under fire, I believe it was under the police department for quite a while, that didn't work out for whatever reason, and that's where it's been is the fire department since then. Past practice of emergency management would make one believe that it is most appropriate and fitting under an extreme public safety department. Contemporary emergency management is rooted in a larger scope anymore. We have four mission areas right now. It's preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation. So what that means is, while it may appear that we belong under police or belong under fire, their missions are very narrow scoped. Since I've been here, it'll be seven weeks coming up next Tuesday, that I've been dedicated to the city of Aurora and my position with the previous administration, and now starting with the new administration, we've been able to grow. We've grown in staff, but we've also grown because we've created new relationships with other departments in the city that were never established previously in the history. We've done a lot of work with public works in terms of floodplain mitigation, building codes, mitigation plans, infrastructure conversations. We've worked very closely with IT in terms of cyber security initiatives, new ways we can use GIS under the public safety umbrella. We have worked closely, very closely with community services, because a large chunk of our work is humanitarian aid and relief. What we're responsible for doing is we're responsible for assigning to all 12 departments and a handful of divisions in the, in the city government structure, their roles and responsibilities under an emergency or disaster or crisis situation. In the seven years I have been here, there's been some difficulty in achieving that, in assigning roles, in moving projects forward, in ensuring that Aurora, the community, has the emergency management program that it deserves, because we have hit boundaries and barriers. There's been confusion sometimes, well, you work for fire, do you really, you know, do we really do this? Is this how it goes? And if we look at the black and white per Illinois state legislation, it does state that the emergency management coordinator, director, or appointee does answer for the primary elected official of that municipality, because at the end of the day, the primary elected official is responsible for the public health, safety, and welfare of the community of Aurora. So by making this change, I feel like it's a positive opportunity for the Aurora Emergency Management Agency to bring it into 2025 and to actually deliver a full-fledged, well-rounded program spanning across all departments and all the square mileage and different sectors that we have here in Aurora.
Alderman Franco?
Now, that's a presentation. Thank you. You're welcome.
So my general question, which you just kind of answered peacefully, which is wonderful, is it a benefit? When I see organizational restructure, the first thing I'm thinking of, why and is it a benefit? Is it going to make us better? You just answered that question, good, because you're the subject matter expert. So that's, thank you for that. And I'm going to have these questions going on all these things, because I just want to make sure that we're not reorganizing, just reorganize. There's got to be a benefit, there's got to be a positive for doing that. And I don't know until I talk to somebody like you, so thank you for that. But I am going to have questions, you know, with all these other ones going forward, because that was a great answer, and I would like to hear from those people that are involved with that, because we really want to make sure that what we do is an enhancement, not a detriment.
So just to be clear, as far as the process goes, as my administration, the third floor, met with every department, we were very, we were listening to recommendations for improvement. I think this was one that very common sense allows her to liaise with all the other departments. And you guys did an excellent tabletop exercise with cybersecurity that by working specifically with that department pushed them to realize some of their shortfalls and gaps. And if she's able to do that with all the departments, that can be impacted, you can see the potential benefit for us to improve as a, as a whole and as a, as a team, so. So I'm going to say most of these are coming with the exception of the sustainability position, which I think I explained to you as, or the whole council, as this is one person we're moving in and we slowly hope that'll stand alone, but also that's the place where they're best positioned to liaise with the people that are working in the building codes, economic development, new buildings coming in and so forth.
So are some of these moves physical in nature, in addition to under a, a different umbrella, I guess?
There's, there's a need throughout the whole city, this is a, a next phase, there's a need for some physical moves. I think that'll be triggered by moving finance to the fourth floor. When the construction's complete on the fourth floor, they'll be moving out of their current space. They're also partially positioned, I think purchasing is down near the clerk's office. And so once they're moved in, there's, there's people already jockeying for space, but that'll be a longer conversation with the facilities to find the right space, assess the size of the, the department, where, where it is now and where it will grow, and, you know, then try and work with facilities, find the space that allows them to work together. Because right now, the IT department is split between two buildings, fire prevention is adding on a few people and they're in a very small space. So there's, there's some spatial needs that need to be addressed. We're also going to be working with Marathon Health that was going into, it was going into the VNA's facility over there at the old Copley. Because of that contract, they're probably going to be going into Elmsley. And then the final thing I'll tell you about is we are, you'll see it coming forward here soon, we are signing an MOU with the Siege of Workforce Development Hub to give them some space in the old water and sewer building and potentially bring some other nonprofits in there in that space to work at a reduced rental cost to cover utilities. So that's a new space where we might start to generate some things. There'll be some other spatial changes as the mission changes, and, and these sort of reorgs are not the only ones that you'll see. You're going to see some others that come out as we better hone and define our mission and make sure that we have people in, in positions to meet the mission and, and goals of, of my administration during the four years, so.
So can I add one more question?
Sure.
So we use the word quasi in these, what are we talking about there? Because they're not going to be quasi forever, they're similar to.
That is.
But, but if it's going to be real, it's not similar, it is the new department. So what are we, that's kind of confusing to me.
So Rick Beanstra came up with that term, I think, in developing the alderman's office, and it's kind of grown since then, smaller department that, you know, stands alone and reports directly to the mayor's office is broadly how he described it, but this apparently has been part of our, our code of ordinances since that time, I believe.
So the word quasi is going to go away someday, I'm hoping? I mean, because.
I'd like to come up, I would like to come up.
Similar to what, you know, similar to anything, you are what you are.
I'd like to come up with a better term as well.
It was kind of confusing, because I didn't know if that just meant a permanent, temporary, or it's going to really, really become something and hence it will no longer be quasi. I just, I was just kind of confused in that. More of a, more of a administrative thing than a real, a reality thing, I just kind of.
I wasn't here when, when that word was developed and worked into it, and Rick said it's not smooth, but.
No, that's okay.
That's what he came up with in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Seville and Alderman Messiakos.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've been privy to several reorganizations over the years. It seems like every new mayor likes to put their stamp on it, and each reorganization has generated a lot of discussion like, like this evening. And it seems that the organization that is being proposed over the many terms of each mayor meet the times and the flexibility of the moment and the needs of not only governing, but meeting the expectations and the needs of the people that we represent. So it's not, this is not unfamiliar territory for city councils to consider restructuring and, and taking a look at the benefits of what would be best for our city, so.
Unfinished.
Alderman Messiakos?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, maybe it's a point of clarification. In your mayor's, mayor's office chart, I don't see anywhere where it mentions a quasi department for aldermen. But when I look at the legislation text, under quasi departments, page six. Do you have a copy?
Yeah.
Okay. Line item 15, quasi departments report to the mayor. If I go to the next page, paragraph three, the office of the alderman. What does that mean? Does the office of the alderman now be required to report to the mayor? Is that what's being asked?
It has, it already has, hasn't it?
And to what extent?
That's currently how it is. Nothing is changing for that.
It's underlined, right? So if it's underlined, is it new?
Rich, do you have a second?
I'm not an attorney, but I know words are important, so.
Maybe you could just highlight sort of how things work previously under the previous administration, because you and I had a conversation about this as well. Budgetary wise as well as organizationally.
Rich Jacobs, chief of staff for the office of alderman. I'm kind of confused. I report to the RAP committee, and the RAP committee oversees me and the staff. I have, under the previous administration and what seems to be currently moving forward, I do meet with the mayor's office. I have been invited to the executive team, monthly or twice a month meetings. month meetings. But I, I don't check in with the mayor's office. I don't get approval. I, I don't understand.
Correct. No, it's just largely for budgetary, but it, it has been, you have been attending the bimonthly meetings under the previous administration as well, right?
Not since the beginning, but I would say in the last two years of that administration's term.
Okay. So I will also reach out to Rick Beanstraw to ask him if this is a change. You pointed out that it's underlined, which usually implies that it is.
I think you need some clarification, further clarification if at all, or removal because that line item 15, quasi departments report to the mayor, period. That's a sentence. That's a statement.
Deb has clarification.
It is my understanding that that was all new language. How it was drafted would give the office of the Alderman's Office the ability to follow our purchasing practices. There is no place in the code, from my understanding, that the office of the Alderman's exists. So this was codifying that position, giving the budgetary, sorry, my computer is not That was developed on page six, along with the clerk's office, to give it its separate place, the emergency management, and then the offices of the Alderman. If you look, continue on page six, I believe around line 12, it allows the chief of staff at the Alderman Office the ability to have purchasing authority afforded to a department head, which does not exist, and then general supervision over staff. So right now, there really isn't anything in the code authorizing some of that. So that is why Mr. Beanstraw drafted it the way he did.
So after this meeting, who would I reach out to for further discussion? You or Mr. Beanstraw?
If you could put both of us in the email, we can address that.
Okay. Mayor?
And as far as, I just want to also ask her, highlight that the chief of staff for the Alderman's Office works and reports to the RAP chair. That hasn't changed.
Yeah, I'm going to await more people than talked.
And then Alderman, please.
When I'm looking at the quasi department section of this, every department here has their head in place. The final two do not. And these are both, they both rebase and really shall be headed by a director appointed by the mayor with advice and consent of the city council. Mayor, you and I had a phone call last week regarding one of these, and you said there was a job posting for external candidates as well. I went on the city website just today, and I don't see either of these positions posted on there.
If it's not up, it will be.
But you said last week it was.
Okay, well, it will be. It's probably working its way through HR.
Last week.
Do you have something to add to that?
Those things were sent to HR last week to then put on the website. I'm not sure what they need to do to finish that out, but it's in their hands right now.
Alderman Seville?
I like the fact that this, this language here gives the Alderman's Office the authority to possess purchasing power and those types of things, have general supervision over the staff, which of course our chief of staff does. But I would like to make sure that if we're going to have that ability in the Alderman's Office, that it still be separated from the administration and the mayors, that it be an equal branch, not tied to anybody else, which is historically is what it's been. There's always been the mayor and everything below the mayor, and then separately to the Alderman's Office right next to it with no connections to anything other than our staff. And that will allow us the independence that we continue to operate under, to continue in the future regardless of who's operating in the third floor.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman, bug?
Thank you, Alderman Seville. Yeah, I, I believe this is an oversight, just with the wording that we just need to clean up. You would be changing our form of government if this went through. So if somebody wants to pass petitions in a year or so, we'd have a different form of government. I don't think that's what we plan to do tonight. So I think just legal needs to clean it up a little bit there. And yeah, of course, the Alderman's Office does not report to the mayor, neither do the 12 Alderman.
Correct. And except for the need for functionality to process purchase orders and so forth that your office does have a budget for.
May I ask the chief of staff a question?
Alderwoman Smith.
Do you need to have the authority to, for budget, for what you said, for purchasing?
Yes.
You found that, have you found that you've had trouble with purchasing since you've been here?
Absolutely.
Because you're not part of the mayor's office?
No.
Okay. All right. So that's my question to him. I think we're running down a slippery slope here, and, and I'm not really liking it. It's like the legislative and the executive office. We don't, we shouldn't be mixing the two for obvious reasons, you know, for, you know, reasons that the residents have voted for a mayor versus, you know, the Alderman. It's a separate entity, and we need to keep it that way. So I think that there's too many, way too many holes in this right now. So I am going to ask this to be put on hold for two weeks until we can clarify some of these holes and, and get into a more comfortable. I want Alderman, I want Mayor Lash to have what he wants in his staff, but I feel like there's just so many questions and, and I can't make any decisions on this until I get those questions answered. And I'm not going to sit here and ask a question after question after question because it's not fair to the rest of everyone else.
Ms. Lang?
Did you make a motion?
I made the motion to hold this for two weeks.
You had a second to listen, corporate counsel?
I'll have a second, yeah. Legal will take a look at the ordinances based on the conversation and work with the mayor's office to address the concerns.
I just have a.
Just a point of clarification. This is the approved org structure that was in the 2025 budget that we're showing right now. It shows that same structure.
Just, just a question. Should we be recommending like Alderwoman Smith is to hold it at a committee or hold it at the city council, or, or should it be sent back to committee for the, the RAP committee to work on the, on the language and the like and come up with a recommendation that we.
Well, we got it for, I made it and I got a second. So unless he's withdrawing, we've, we've decided.
No, I'm, I'm just throwing it out for.
And clarify, your motion was to hold it here at COW for two weeks.
Do you feel it would be better back at RAP?
I think if there's.
I think it's best to do it this way because your motion, we have a fifth Tuesday coming up, so it's going to bump everything. So I think it's just better to keep it at COW.
Plus, it allows everybody to be part of the discussion versus RAP where there's five.
And I'd like for the mayor's office to make themselves available for the questions that we have about this structure.
You can call anytime. The, and, and legal's going to work on cleaning up the language a little bit. There's no intent, by the way, to, to cause the.
I don't think there is, but we need to understand it.
Yeah, to cause the Alderman's, put the Alderman's Office under the, under the mayor. In fact, when I was an Alderman, I wanted even more dependence, wanted our own attorney, wanted our own structure and to have a complete separation because that's how some strong executives work in Will County and Champaign County. But this is the process that's been put in place for a while. Are there any other questions on some of the other movements? Does everybody understand why we're moving animal control over to community services versus being in facilities? I'm sure there's people that know the history of that. It used to be in that department. And I think under our current leadership, it'll, it'll thrive a little bit better there. And then the community, as Nick pointed out, we're, you know, sort of moving Clayton's department out and moving some people away. So Special Events is moving under, under, under Tony Martinez. They also work very closely together. It's a good relationship, both, both Mike Nelson and Tony. And everybody think it's a, a good idea and a good relationship that'll be had there. And then.
We talked to staff on all of these. A lot of it was to build synergy and like just efficiency. So with engagement and equity as part of just the mayor's priorities, when we're looking at equity directly reporting to the mayor, just underscores that commitment to equity on all city departments and having that kind of, that synergy. Same for engagement, being able to build a civic consciousness and work on engaging our communities directly, revitalizing our neighborhood groups, having some newly ones emerge and really working with the community on a lot of the, the different decision-making and have the community feel more integrated in the city government. And then we've already talked about EMA, the Office of Sustainability Development, a business opportunity. This new office is really emerging out of MoED. So those are the, the primary changes. And then the Office of the City Clerk, we talked with both offices. And really, one of the things that's really big about that is we will begin centralizing and managing their city contracts. And right now, that's just not being done in a formal way. So the City Clerk's Office will be taking that on and working closely, working closely with the office to ensure that and that we have that, that documentation.
Can you explain, can you, managing the city contracts, what, how is it being done now and how are you suggesting it be done moving forward?
We're going to, city contracts?
So first of all, one of the things that we discovered is a lot of the contracts that come through council are retained and available through the clerk's office, but there's other contracts that we've found scattered sort of throughout the city, and we want to have one place where this is centralized. And we felt that the clerk's office was the best place to do it. I'll let Jennifer add anything to that or how you expect to function independently of the law department.
Sure. Thank you. Very briefly. At the City Clerk's Office, what we do is we try to coordinate the entire city through Legistar. As you all know, you see the Legistar items and you see the attachments to the Legistar items. City staff is supposed to, and they are directed to attach their Legistar items so that you can all review them prior to the meetings. After the items are all approved, specifically when we talk about contracts, staff is responsible for having the contracts or seeing that they are fully executed, signed, returned to the clerk's office, fully signed, so that we can then maintain them for, we, we keep the originals. And so we then take the originals, we make sure that they are in a format that they can be searched, they can be found when needed. So we are working on, moving forward, as I have expressed to all of you and you have all authorized, we are working on the digitization project, searchable format, that everything. So in conclusion, while we have been working on trying to gather all of the contracts in a nice, neat pile and making them searchable for everyone, the idea here is that instead of having everything landing in the law department, one of the reasons for moving the clerk away from the law department that is top on the priority list of the mayor's office is to bring everything to the clerk's office.
Mayor, if I may.
Alderman Masiacos?
And I appreciate that explanation by our clerk. We all get an orientation when we first come in here at city council in the first five days of being elected, sworn in. We also have been around enough to know the change that happened over the years. We've seen a, we've seen a reorg at, at the city level every two years for the past eight years, without a doubt on the dot. And I wouldn't be surprised if we have another reorg in another two years here with this administration as well. But they're definitely entitled to reorganization, being that they're new. We have a resolution, I should say, a motion on the floor to hold it. We could ask our questions as well, I believe, moving forward to staff to clarify some things before we revisit this thing in COW. I'd like to ask my colleagues that we can keep moving on with the agenda. And do we have to vote on this motion that's on the floor right now or no? Can we get that from me?
There is a motion and a second.
And that's all it takes for two weeks.
The motion was made by Alderwoman Smith. The second was made by Alderman Franco. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
I don't believe this requires a vote. This is one, a very similar Alderman Masiacos with the, with the firehouse. You guys a couple of times moved it on.
Do we need to hold it yes or no? Very simple question. Do we need to vote to hold it or is it?
No, we don't. I, I.
All right. So we're holding it for two weeks then. That's all there is to it.
We have the mayor, take, take control of the meeting. Let the mayor take control.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. So you, we're going to keep it right here. That's perfectly fine. I have no problem working through the concerns. It's, it sounds like largely the concern is ironing out some language as to how the Alderman's Office looks on the org chart. And we'll get back in touch with Rick. He's out for a week, so the two-week timeline works, works well for that.
Mayor, one quick question.
Alderman White.
Yeah, one other thing, one concern is I, I see that MoCA is being dissolved. So I'd be one, my question is, will any roles be eliminated with this reorganization? And that's, I'd be interested in knowing that as well at some point.
So the, so I think what we're doing is putting an economic, all right, I'm sorry, a community engagement.
The only, there, there actually can be an additional role, which is going to be the, the original chief is no longer with the city. So that's going to be turned to a director role, but no like actual removement of like any roles in particular. Just a change.
And the, and the role of that director's position is going to involve working with some of the boards and commissions, developing a more robust communications with our community, just especially to push some programs out with some equity, with an equity lens put on it. And as well, continuing to work with the Alderman and Alderman's Office on a lot of the community events. So that part will stay the same, but there will be a little bit more work with the boards and commissions. So this is similar, a lower-paying version of, of maybe what Clayton had in that, in that role.
Mayor Lash, can I add?
Alderman Barrero?
One request. You mentioned engagement, but I don't see them on the org chart. Can you add them, add that?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, to follow up on that, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Bug?
Our chief of staff just put up that other, the full chart, I believe, from last year's, was that last year's budget?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if you can, with the restructure chart and put that next to the existing, so that we have other existing departments that aren't on here because they're not getting restructured, Finance, Public Works, all those other things. We could have the full chart with the restructure so we get a full view of.
Picture.
What's happening in the city.
The quasi departments.
Yeah, just the full thing. So we can see it. Our fair citizens can see it. Everybody knows what's going on.
And can we have the names too, like this is?
Sure. There's going to be one or two positions, as, as Alderman Nunez pointed out, that aren't filled yet, but we can add that. I think we've got a scribbled-out version that also has the salary levels next to it. Anybody else on this agenda item? We're going to keep it here. Okay.
Well, say, Mayor, thank you for, for giving us this opportunity to speak to this degree at the committee level, which we didn't really have the past eight years. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Barrero, are there any other items on the RAP committee?
Yes, we have two, two more items. Item 25-0506, a resolution authorizing the Ward One Business Grant Program, 50/50 matched to, up to $5,000 per project per year for any qualifying business for the purpose of upgrading or improvement next year of the property.
Consent?
This is information only.
No, no action is needed on this.
No action needed. And the next one is also information only. Agenda item 25-0507, a resolution authorizing a two-year grant program in the amount of $50,000 per year in partnership with Rebuilding Together Aurora to assist qualified residents with projects in the first ward. Information only. And the reason this is coming forward is because the projects only go through the end of an Alderman's term. So there's a new term. So they're being brought up again. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Barrero, for giving the RAP committee report. That being said, there's only one more agenda item under new business. If the Alderman didn't get the memo, the workers' compensation agreement has been pulled. So this will probably be coming back. It's my understanding that the person who was injured was re-injured, and we'll have to revisit this at a future time. Any other items to come before the city council?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Alderman Franco, second by Alderwoman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned at 6:47 PM. This meeting is adjourned at 6:47 PM.